Things all here and it's seven o'clock, so I'll call this study session of the Lakewood City Council for Monday, January 11th to order. First item for discussion under review of the 2021 Citizen Advisory Boards, Committees, and Commissions Work Plans is the Lake Management District One Work Plan. And for this, we have Greg Vigran and Mark Pfeifer. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Mark Pfeifer, sorry. Is Greg, hi Greg.
Hi, Mark.
You gentlemen, I'll give you the floor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, thanks for having us tonight. I'll let Mark Pfeifer, he's the Chair of our committee, I'll let him introduce himself.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and members of the council, I'm Mark Pfeifer and I'm here representing the other members of the Lake Management District. Peter Marsh, who's our Vice Chair, Mary Dodsworth, of course, is your very own representative for the city, David Klaus, who's the representative for JBLM, Richard Martinez, who's a resident, like, American Lake resident, and Susan Vizo, who is the representative for Kent Murray. And really, all I have to say is I want the council to know that the support and heavy lifting that Greg and Paul Busic and Diana Haller do to make this thing happen is really appreciated by those of us who live on the lake. And without further ado, I'll turn it back over to Greg, so get on with business. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. All right, so I'm just gonna go quickly through the work plan. As far as the budget, as you can see, most of the costs are revolved around particularly work on the lake by the contractor. We do have a little bit of money in there for public education outreach. And the main thing we did and will do again this year was a postcard out to the membership of the lake. I think there's 329 accounts on the lake. And then there are some administrative costs, primarily myself, as well as a couple of the folks in accounting that do the billing annually, which is a fairly lengthy task with that many accounts. As far as revenue, I know we do have some money, I don't have the exact number right now, but we will be carrying forward some money from 2020 into 2021, which is positive. And we have, out of the 329 accounts, there's four that are delinquent, which is, again, pretty good. We did, or the council passed a resolution last year that gave us the ability to frankly enforce the payments. And so with those four racks, we're gonna be filing liens because they've been, they've had several months to pay and haven't. So we're pursuing that based on what's in our, what's in the municipal code. As far as activities, as I noted, we have a contractor, we had a two-year contract with a company called Aqua Technics, and they'll continue in 2021 with work on the lake. If you've been out on the lake at all, or if you're out there last year, the mill foil, the work that was done in 2019 made a huge difference in the lake in 2020. And there is some mill foil left, but it's very limited and very scattered compared to what was there in 2019 and years before. So that was a big success, the treatment. There has been a new plant that the contractor identified, and some citizens have noticed as well, that's starting to emerge, another, unfortunately, another aquatic weed or noxious aquatic weed. It's acrylic pond weed, it's pretty limited right now. And so the contractor is gonna be focusing some of the treatment in 2021 to control the acrylic pond weed. And we hope to have an annual meeting in 2021. Last year, it was obviously canceled because of the COVID, and we had an online meeting, but, you know, pretty limited attendance compared to, we had planned to have a meeting at American Lake Park, which we will, again, plan for September of 2021. And that is all I have, if there's any questions.
Questions from council? I did have a quick question. Is there any indication of how the pond weed arrived? Is it animal transmitted, coming in on boats? Montaneous question.
Yeah, it's a good question. I'll have to talk to our contractor. I actually went out with them last time on the boat in June and surveyed the lake, mainly looking at the mill foil. We did look at some of the pond weed, but I don't recall if he said how it's, you know, how it arrives. I'm guessing it's similar to other aquatic weeds, and it's usually by boats, you know, in their props and so forth, or on the holes. But yeah, I can, I can check with our contractor and see if he knows more about that.
And this is a question, kind of a for a future answer, is this particular district equipped or appropriate for reaction to invasive animal species if they show some prevalence in the area? For example, I know somewhere in Oregon, they had problems with some snails and boats had to do certain things. We operate the main boat launch, and it seemed like something would be easier to prevent than it would be to cure.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the way the district was formed, it certainly, you know, there's, there's some leeway in terms of what sort of activities they could, they could work on, and I think it would certainly include invasive animals in this case. There has been reports of nutria in the lake, around the lake, which is some sort of rodent that likes to eat trees. And so that was pointed out from a few of the residents. There hasn't been any action taken, but I would think that the, the district would certainly be involved in that. I think it would end up being a joint effort, you know, with also the federal properties who aren't technically part of the district, but they do participate financially. So, yeah, I think it would definitely be something that would be within their wheelhouse.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Farmer?
Yeah, nutria are adorable, but they are so invasive. Oh my gosh, that's the problem, they're so cute. People are like, oh, they can't be harmful. I had a question, one of the work plan items is an annual report. Remind me about when that comes out during the year?
Yeah, that's a good question. In fact, I just pinged the contractor today because we hadn't received the annual report for 2020.
Okay, that's where I was going with that, is, I hope I didn't miss it.
Yeah, no, it typically should have arrived probably in the year, but he hasn't, so I emailed him today, in fact, because I hadn't gotten it and thought about that. So it should be any time now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other hands? We'll see. Mr. Bulkey? Just waving. Well, thank you, Mr. Pfeifer and Mr. Vigran. If you don't have anything further else to add, we'll let you go for the evening, and thank you for your participation in our meeting and bringing us up to date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to a review of the Arts Commission Work Plan with Sally Martinez.
Good evening, everyone, Happy New Year.
Better already.
To start out 2021 with the Arts Commission, we have 11 members and four youth council liaisons. And the main difference this year is we have two committees, one's a public art committee and one's a performing art committee. So we consolidated that so that we can really focus on public and performing arts and not have our work diluted by other events that creep up. The first one is that we will be involved with any special events that pertain to public and performing arts. We'll focus on recruitment and retention. We'll continue the rotating art at City Hall when people are back at work. We are gonna focus on the public art and getting the sculptures completed at the Colonial Plaza. Right now, we're working on a public art contest for the city's 25th anniversary that will be both virtual to begin with, and then an in-person exhibit when we can have events this summer. We decided to devote our $6,000 budget that we currently have this year, we get $2,000 a year, and we've rolled over the budget each year to save $6,000 to work on signal box routes. So we're looking forward to really having color in the city and working with emerging artists in the city to produce those. We'll have a fall Arts Commission Retreat at Lakewood Gardens. And in the fall, we'll also begin Film Festival planning for 2022, which is a new event. We'll focus on ongoing education of the commission. And of course, we have our joint commission meeting with you. Our main special events that I'll highlight are the MLK event, the virtual event is coming up this Thursday. We'll have, aside from the ones that I mentioned, we'll also have our summer concert series in the summer. And hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have an unveiling of the public art at Colonial Plaza and a new event that focuses on art at the Colonial Plaza in the fall. And that concludes our 2021 work plan.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Any questions from council? Mr. Bransdeter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Martinez, thank you for being here today. I had just a couple of questions on the work plan. And it appears to be, in October, there's, it mentions a joint commission meeting, and I was just wondering exactly which, what that is, is that, and what, what should the commissions and things are going to be involved?
That's the joint commission meeting with the city council.
Oh, so it's, it's a meeting with a, that, while the work plan has a lot of goals to bring to fruition both in 2021 and work on for 2022, it doesn't seem to have any policy work in terms of maturing the city's public art policy. We did, they did do some work and made us a presentation in the past year about how we might go, and I thought that that was received but needed to be worked on some more. And then not to jump ahead, but I noticed in the documents that we're looking at today that it's the Parks and Recreation Board that is going to work on public art policy. And it doesn't seem in their work plan to be any coordination with the Arts Commission or vice versa here in this work plan. Is that a change in focus that's moving from one commission to the other, or are they working independently? Because I think while there, it's important to be doing things and creating events in art, that don't wanna lose track of the, of the long-term planning that public art needs.
Thank you, those are good points. With your first question, the public art policy, that was, as you mentioned, presented with, when I presented the public art program, and that's being deferred to 2022. And at that time, we'll delve deeply, and it was included in the budget component of the public art plan. And it had its own line item for developing those and being in a professional to assist with that. Speaking for the public, for the Parks Board, though, I'll have to have you ask them during their presentation, I'm not sure what that is, but we would always work side by side with anything to do with public art.
Thank you, thank you. I'll take it up during their presentation as to what they mean by working on public art policy. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Martinez? Thanks very much for the update, and we will move to Mr. Brian Humphries to review the Community Service Advisory Board Work Plan and the Lakewood Promise Board Work Plan. Mr. Humphries?
Yeah, good evening, council, thank you for the time. You'll notice on these two work plans that I present, they're gonna be largely similar to what you saw last year with a couple of key differences that I will go over. So first, with the Community Services Advisory Board, just first off, looking at it, I noticed that there were a couple of dates that are wrong. I'll obviously clean those up, I apologize for that, not sure how that happened, but it still looks like my handiwork. But the, the Community Services Advisory Board has seven active community members right now that you have seen quite a few times over the last few months, they're doing great work, putting a lot of time into evaluating the needs of the community. The first thing on the work plan is something new. We have been having ongoing conversations interdepartmentally about affordable housing in terms of infrastructure and housing density, but also affordable housing and homelessness prevention on the Community Services Advisory Board side. We wanted to have more conversations about infrastructure from an affordable housing, homelessness prevention lens, and no commission by itself is equipped to do that. We thought the Planning Commission could have joint meetings with the Community Services Advisory Board to have that conversation. So how we do that, how we facilitate it, how we structure that conversation, we will still figure out, but that's a new addition to the work plan. The rest is what you saw from last year, the, they'll approve the five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, and fair housing analysis for the, for community development. They'll review the 2021 human services contract performance, you'll remember that we chose to do one-year human services contracts this year because we didn't know what was gonna happen to the needs of the community due to COVID-19. And so they will undergo the same human services allocation and funding recommendation process for 2022 funding that they did for you in 2020. They'll approve the 2020 CAPER report, and then they'll help us conduct a public hearing on community development, housing, and service needs. And then they'll also advise and approve the 2022 CDBG and home funding strategy. Any questions about that work plan before we talk about the other one?
Any questions for Mr. Humphries on that? I wonder, there are specific CDBG, CV, and CV3 funds that flow through to the city that have different criteria for allocation than normal CDBG funds, how are those gonna be handled?
I could not tell you that, that's on the community development side, I'm not sure.
Okay. Mr. Caulfield?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we learned last week, because we have to update our consolidated plans in partnership with Tacoma, and so we learned last week that the city of Tacoma is actually beginning to kick that process off. So once that gets underway, we'll either, I can recall if it has to go through the CSAB, but if it does, we will facilitate it through that committee and then get it before the council here, hopefully in the very near future. But again, the good news is that Tacoma has kicked off that process as it relates to the CDBG CV3 monies.
Thank you. Any other questions? And we move to, what's the second element of your report, Mr. Humphries, on the Lakewood Promise?
Yeah, so Lakewood's promise, this is also largely similar to last year, you'll recall, in 2019, we went through a pretty laborious process to ask not only what is Promise doing, but why is it doing what it's doing, what does it really mean to move the needle on the five promises for children, youth, and families in the community? And the conclusion we came to is that direct service to youth is important, but it is also something a lot of partners are doing in the community. The Promise Board's contribution is to look at ensuring that families and communities are thriving, making sure that, thinking about the fact that families can afford housing. And so we adopted for 2020 two strategic initiatives, a youth mental health initiative that we would do with the school district in partnership with the school district, and then increasing the presence of family workforce development, high-quality, actionable family workforce development efforts in Lakewood, and you've heard me talk about that quite a bit. So those remain our strategic initiatives for 2021. Those are things that we, we think are multi-year, slowly get the boulder moving to move the needle on those two issues over time. A new one for us is the third bullet point on the work plan, creating and executing a plan to increase Lakewood's promise communications capacity. One thing that became clear as we talked about these initiatives and as we've had ongoing community collaboration meetings every month, is that there are a lot of organizations and efforts and publications talking about what is happening in the community, what are the events, but not a lot to show, or to raise awareness about the resources. Often, someone in the community says, I need this, and we know of somebody in the community that is offering it, but who is making those connections? And then the other thing they would like to be doing is, we've had, we've had, our youth council members have been extremely active in the Lakewood Promise meetings every month. We actually added a regular youth council update because they had so much to offer, we just build that into the agenda now. And one thing that came up from that was the desire to increase empathy, so let's have more people in the community hearing about real stories from real families in the community. And so youth said they would love to leverage Lakewood's promise to have more other youth and youth leaders in the community, talk about stories, talk about issues like youth mental health, write those things up. And so what that looks like will take a lot of form, but that's what we're currently working on, so increasing our communication capacity. And then the last one is coordinating with the youth council on a youth summit, if that's feasible, and then a mental health workshop, so it's gonna overlap between one and four. But we've had such great conversations with the youth council members, they invited us to come and facilitate a broader conversation with the youth council about the issue of youth mental health and helped them take a lead in directing our effort in that, in that area. So that's it for the promise from me. Any questions?
Thank you, any questions? Don't see any hands are waving. Well, thank you, Mr. Humphries. We'll hear more from you in the years to come, I'm sure. And we now move to a review of the Landmark and Heritage Advisory Board Work Plan with Tiffany Spear. Ms. Spear?
Good evening, members of the council and Mr. Mayor, Tiffany Spear. I'm actually here kind of as a double substitute. First of all, the lead person for this, this council or advisory board is generally Courtney Brunel, but she's on leave. And so the person who's taken lead staff position while she's been gone this last fall and into February has been Ramon Rodriguez, planner from Community Economic Development. I'm covering for him tonight. So just very quickly, the
Disclaimer.
The L-HAB will continue focusing on a number of things that started last year. First and foremost, continuing to incorporate and encourage better communication with some of the youth councils and school groups that are in city of Lakewood to try to increase awareness of Lakewood's history. They're also going to be working to continue and hopefully secure at least one more grant to do the historical street signs. That project was begun last year. The signs were actually purchased, but what's needed now is the hardware to actually mount it to street poles or what have you throughout the city. So that's actually something that was applied for last week by Mr. Rodriguez, another grant for that. And then there's also just gonna be the continued work, hopefully, once COVID lets up and the protocols are allowing more in-person interactions, to have things happening at the new location for the historical museum, as well as trying to have events at the new city-created spot right by their office, the name is escaping me right now, I can't believe it, downtown. In any event, if there's any other questions, I'm happy to pass them along to Mr. Rodriguez to follow up with you after the fact.
Questions for Ms. Spear? Get off easy tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for double substituting. So we'll move on to a review of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Board of Work Plan with Shannon Kelly Fong.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor and council members. I am also here substituting for Parks Recreation and Community Service Director Mary Dodsworth for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. As you can see on the work plan, they have six items that they're gonna be focusing on, from the Fort Siloquam Park boundary line adjustments to the Park CIP updates, the diversity, equity, including in Parks and Recreation, outdoor adventure programming, and then a emphasis on special events, including the 25th anniversary, and then park code updates as needed. And you can see the plan for the meetings. And to go to Councilmember Bransdeter's question about the public art policy and programs, I'll have to circle back with Ms. Dodsworth and get an explanation for why that particular meeting is on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kelly Fong? This is Farmer.
I was curious about the diversity, equity, and inclusion work plan item. I'm wondering if that's something that you guys have been working on for a while, or is that something to address our more current situation?
Councilmember Farmer, that's a great question, and I will have Mary Dodsworth follow up with that as well. I believe it is a new item.
Thank you.
Mr. Whalen?
Thank you. I had a question about the special event schedule. So the monthly night markets at Colonial Plaza, is that kind of in its gestation period yet? Do we have a sense of what that might look like?
I believe they're still actively working on that.
Got it, okay. Because it looks, as you know, we changed the farmer's market to Thursdays, so if we have a night market on, on a monthly night, I was just trying to figure out what night they've chosen or how that's gonna coordinate well with the farmer's market. More to follow, I take it.
Mr. Caulfield?
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Whalen, right now, the thought process is to perhaps, starting off once, if not twice a month, doing it at the Colonial Plaza on a Friday, on a Friday evening, or even on a Saturday evening, but really, at this point in time, as Ms. Kelly Fong noted, kind of in the, in the works right now. But, but I will tell the council that we are committed to getting up a farmer's market, or an evening farmer's market, or late afternoon farmer's market, going later in 2021.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Kelly Fong. We now will move to a review of the Public Safety Advisory Committee Work Plan with Police Chief Mike Zaro.
Mayor, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Here to present the 2021, it's mislabeled, right above the chart is 2020, but it's the 2021 PSAC work plan. They've got five goals or projects, I guess, as you could call them on their work plan, the goals or projects, I guess, as you could call them on their work plan. The first is recruitment, and that refers to recruitment for the committee itself, and encouraging citizens in their different neighborhoods to put in when there are openings. Road structure, roundabout education efforts and updates, referring to exactly that, just kind of educating folks on how roundabouts improve traffic safety and how best to navigate them. The fireworks ordinance education efforts, and this is where I'm really going to use them, is getting the public educated on the new fireworks ordinance that takes effect next year. The railroad and Clover Creek Crossing, or railroad station and Clover Creek Crossing updates, it's just rail safety is what that amounts to. At Clover Creek, there's a specific crossing there that they've had some safety concerns about. And then a little ironic, given the recent conversations we've had, but city lighting plan update with Public Works. So just working on where lighting can improve safety around the city. So that, and then the, the rest of the chart shows the dates that they plan or had tentatively planned to either provide updates or develop a specific plan for those topics. That is all I have for you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Chief Zarro? Mrs. Farmer?
I was curious if there was any conversation among the committee about the PC FIT group that's just starting up, or any of the jail issues that we have been having, some of the policing bills that are in the legislature. I was just curious. And Councilmember Bransdatter might be able to shed some light on that, too.
Well, the PC FIT for that part, I can tell you that it's a completely separate entity. I provide them updates, but the policies that are related to that are driven by state law. And because PSCAC focuses mostly, well, not mostly, but almost strictly on local policies and policy matters, they really don't get too far into what the state does or, you know, render any opinions on state policies.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Bransdatter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, yeah, I would echo what the chief just said about the committee's focus is always been on looking at the things that are internal to the city in a, in a practical way to try to enhance the public safety. That being said, I did have a conversation with the committee chair in the past few days. And he noted that this is a committee that only meets every other month, and that their work plan is not particularly robust. And so he felt that there was some openness if there were any topics that the council wanted to add on to their work plan for them to do some either exploring information with the idea of impacting other policy or that's going on. And so I would, I would pass that on if there are any suggestions, that there is an openness to add an item or two to their work. But they didn't have an item that they were asking to have added. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you, Chief.
Now we Yeah, just to clarify, Councilmember Farmer, I see you have a hand up. Is that the old hand? Or did you have a new question?
That's the old hand, but I was actually toying with the idea. We're slated to approve these work plans next week. So if we had a suggestion, say, we would need to get it in this week, I'm get it to the chair. Is that, that, I've never had a, had anything to suggest before, so just unsure of the process.
Mr. Coffield?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Farmer, actually, the work plans are driven by this body. So it is up to you what you want to assign to the respective committees. So if you want to add something, you know, you can do it tonight, or you can also do it on Monday evening. Likewise, throughout the year, as items or issues come up, you can assign them work, work as well, which actually does periodically happen throughout, throughout, throughout the year. So, yeah, so.
Nicely done, Mr. City Manager. Here, here, I had a thought. It might require a little bit more research. I don't know. I know that the city does some pretty robust citizen surveys, and I didn't know what types of questions have been asked regarding public safety in the citizen surveys that might be mined for information. I also note that, that there are only men on this committee, and it would be interesting to me to, to do a short survey and perhaps get, get a wider, you know, me and my, my gender priorities. It would be interesting to, to get a broader perspective on that. That could be an opportunity to add a topic to the, to this work agenda.
I'll add an agenda item for you, Councilmember Farmer. In, in the years that I've been mayor, which is now, but going on its ninth year, we've never had a female applicant to the Public Safety Advisory Committee that I can recall.
I've got some work to do.
As the as a father of four daughters, I always have reminded that Ginger could do everything Fred could do backward in high heels. Any other questions? Well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We now move to Cameron Fairfield for a review of the lead of the youth council work plan.
There we go. Hello, City Council. Thank you for having me. I'm to speak on the, the last issue for the Public Safety Advisor Committee. We have had female youth council members serve on that board. So maybe one of them would be interested in, in serving on the board when they're, when they're graduated. So, excuse me, for the youth council, starting in February, February, we're going to have a park board presentation about the parks, capital projects from Mary Dodsworth. We're also going to have Ron Banner, the Clover Park School District Superintendent, attend the meeting. He's going to check in with the students on virtual learning and kind of give his update from their side. In March, we plan to have the Liquid's Promise Board Mental Health Discussion that Brian had mentioned earlier. In March also, we'll, we'll be having our seniors turn in the AWC scholarship applications. In April, we plan to have a facilitated meeting with the, our senior center coordinator, Elizabeth Shide, fostering some senior and youth conversations. I think it's two of the, two of the larger groups that have been impacted by the COVID lockdowns for different reasons, but I'm trying to foster some of their conversations and, and what the, what Lakewood's going to look like moving forward. In May, we plan to have a youth version of the Citizens Academy. This will be hosted by Police Chief Mike Zarro. One of the topics that the youth council said was important to them at the start of this was police transparency and police accountability. So this would be a good chance to have some of those direct conversations and communicate with, with our police department. And this is something that he had mentioned would be more effective in person. So we've pushed it back further in the year as possible. Hopefully, we're able to get some gatherings so we can make that happen. And then ending their, their term ends in June, where we're going to finish up recruitment to some of the other schools. We've had a, a heavy Harrison Prep, and now Clover Park attendance. So we're looking to reach out to some of the students at Lakes and and, oh, and then added in somewhere in the mix, we're going to have an update from the City of Lakewood's Equity Diversity, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Manager. So that will fit that in somewhere. And that is our youth council work plan 2021.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fairfield? Mr. Whalen?
Thank you. Cameron, a couple of years ago, maybe four or five now, we had a really nice evening, kind of an integrated event where we had the city council and the youth council, council members together. And I, I don't know if it was at a museum or where we went, but we really had a nice evening where we kind of did some work together and had some discussion breakout sessions together. And I thought it was a nice way to really glean from them what was on their mind and of interest in a facilitated manner, and for them to get to know us and for us to get to know them. I don't see any of that on the work plan, other than the monthly reports to council and the end of year wrap up. It might be nice if there's an opportunity to do that, to actually have a little bit more of a, of an integrated, maybe study session meeting or an event where we do maybe a hosted dinner for them, maybe in the May timeframe, after they have their youth summit to get a little after action report from them and to, you know, thank them for their time and to kind of further discussion and wish them well as they head into graduation in June.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, we can definitely add something like that. I could just reach out to Brianna for the, for the schedule. And I know it's something they really did enjoy when we had it. Geez, time flies. Probably was two years ago now. So, yeah, something we can definitely add.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Well, thanks again.
Thank you.
And now we'll circle back. I we clicked the mute button on Ms. Spear too early, appears, without getting to the plan for the Lakewood Planning Commission. Very important one. So we'll recall Ms. Spear.
Thank you once more, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The Planning Commission is slightly different in one respect from the other boards and commissions in that they do have their own set of bylaws. And after going back and reviewing those, as well as the description that's included on the city's website, there's a three general areas that the Planning Commission is actually tasked with assisting the council about general planning issues, and then also redevelopment and transportation. So as you look at the 2021 work plan for the Planning Commission, all three of those areas are covered. In the first quarter, and this has already happened, actually at their first meeting, the 2021 Chair and Vice Chair were elected. And in fact, it was a reelection of Don Daniels as Chair and Connie Coleman-Lackerty as Vice Chair. There is a current vacancy on that commission. And at our meeting on the 6th of January, Nancy Hudson-Echols actually announced that she will also be leaving the commission as of March 31st of this year. So there will be two vacancies by the end of the first quarter. Coming up in the next few meetings, there'll be the continued discussion of the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan and Development Code, and then that is scheduled to come to council in mid to late February. So you'll be seeing that relatively soon. There will also be a review of the CDBG and Home Consolidation Plan and Annual Action Plan, which was discussed briefly earlier with Mr. Humphries. And then, as Mr. Humphries mentioned as well, there's a thought to maybe touch base once or twice this year between the Planning Commission and the Community Services Advisory Board to strengthen each board's understanding of what the other does first and foremost, but also making sure that the, the Community Services Advisory Board understands land use and how that's affecting some of their interest and concern about housing affordability for Lakewood's residents. Looking further into the year, one of the things that will be probably tracked throughout this year, as well as into next, is the adoption of Vision 2050 by the Puget Sound Regional Council and how that will now be implemented at the countywide and then city-specific level. That's going to affect ultimately the city's comprehensive plan. There will be the, the annual 2021 now comprehensive plan map amendment package coming to you in the second quarter. There may be a technical amendment happening for the Lakewood's Development Code. It won't be as big as the group last year. If you recall, there was a number of cleanup amendments needed to Title 18A after having been adopted in 2019. So after having a year of using it, we were able to bring you a bunch of corrections. Those are now done. So this should be a lighter year in terms of annual amendments. Then, speaking of transportation, there'll be another review of the six-year Transportation Improvement Program or Plan. And there will also be looking at the start of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Packet toward the end of the year. One of the projects that's also related to transportation and is new to the Planning Commission's annual docket, Public Works Director, Mr. Bucic, and also Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Buhr, have had some discussions about the fact that there are some rights of way within the city that are likely never to be used or opened officially as, as streets. So maybe these are things that should be vacated and used for other types of land use. So that will be coming to you probably summer to fall timeframe to talk about, once the Planning Commission has taken a look at it. And then the other thing, and this is again related to 18A and what's happened since with that big update that happened, looking at what requirements are in place for landscaping in the commercial zoning districts, what type of landscaping may be required going forward. And that is it for Planning Commission, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Bransdatter? You're muted, Mike. You're still on mute.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, my, my question is actually not for Ms. Spear, but for you, Mr. Mayor. The vacancy, the current vacancy on the commission has been there for a while, and we went through a recruitment application period. And I had thought that we, it was reported to us that there were some applications received, and I was wondering where you see the timeline of filling the current vacancy, and when we'll be reopening something for Ms. Hudson-Echols's vacancy?
With respect to the first question, next meeting, there was some additional due diligence. And for Ms. Echols, if she's prospective, I think we could take applications, but it would be more timely, closer to her departure.
Okay, so I guess that, that, that's fine. Satisfied by curiosity. Thank you.
Mr. Coffield?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to point out that Ms. Hudson-Echols has not officially submitted her resignation yet. I think that's the case. Ms. Spear, she made a verbal announcement at the last meeting.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
This time you are off the hook.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And we'll move to Tuck Kraus, who will give us a review of Lodging Tax Advisory Board work plan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The work plan for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for 2021 is very similar to past years. There, one thing I do want to call out is that we do have equal representation from the businesses that are authorized to collect the tax, as well as those who are authorized to receive it. So we have three and three on each side. Our meeting schedule is comprised of three main meetings that occur annually. In July, we have the Joint Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting. In September, we have presentations by In September, we have presentations by applicant, by the applicants, and the committee will make a recommendation to the city council. In November, the recommendations will be presented to the city council. And typically, those go to the city council for approval or the city council will approve it as part of the November meetings. And so that concludes my presentation.
Questions for Ms. Kraus? I have one. How are the lodging tax receipts looking for 2020?
So for 2020, we still have two more months of collections and we're currently at about $750,000. So we'll get close to the 800,000 that has been estimated or slightly over.
Right, thank you. So we now give the shuffle here. Move to a review of the Surface Water Management Utility Revenue Bonds. Ms. Kraus?
Sure. So the revenue-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I had two overall questions about the work plans that I'd like to pose for the council if that is appropriate.
Sure.
So the first one is, I was hoping the council would be amenable to an administrative request. The, the L-HAB and the Planning Commission have an overview section on their work plans, which just basically says why they exist and what they hope to accomplish. And the others don't. And I was curious if that would be okay for us to add?
I don't see why not. I think it's merely that they were drafted by different people.
Exactly. The second thing I wanted to pose for the council is I was, I was really struck by the DEI item on the P-Rab Committee. And I was curious what the council thought about asking or about adding that to the other work plans. This would mean something different to every, to every committee and to the work that they're, they're doing. And they would, they could think about how to, how to add an equity lens to what they're doing. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I'd like to start that conversation.
Well, I think we need to have that conversation. I just offhand don't know that it's applicable to the work of every committee. It may be appropriate to the, how committees are composed, which is more at the council level. So there may be, I think there's a place for it, but I think it needs some consideration and discussion rather than just being added at this meeting. Mr. Whelan?
Well, I think in light of that, I mean, certainly it's a good thought and observation. From what I understand, we are poised to hire a DEI manager as part of the budget. But I think Mr. Coffield will let us know that that budget doesn't start until, I think, one July this year. And so hopefully that person will, you know, make an appearance on our agenda at some point soon. And we can have kind of a full conversation and maybe give them a sense of what we're hoping to accomplish with regard to that position through Mr. Coffield. And that might lead to a more robust discussion, council member Farmer, as to how that kind of interrelates and weaves its way through all the work we do in the city, including the citizen advisory boards. Not that we shouldn't necessarily do it upfront, you know, in January, but I'm saying it'll, it'll certainly be of focus, probably even better when we hire somebody to kind of keep ourselves to task, I would think. That's my thought, but certainly not that we can't include it on work plans.
Yeah, I'd like to see it addressed earlier, earlier in July, but.
Yep. Yep.
Anything further? Then we'll move to.
Looks like Mike, council member Brandstetter.
Yeah, I clicked, I apologize. I clicked the wrong button and my hand raising function disappeared, so.
Yeah, you know, and I just, I just wanted to address the council member Farmer's thought. And I think that for all of the committees and even for us as a council and on staff, you know, we're going to be paying some attention to looking at diversity and equity. But I think that in terms of calling out in a work plan that is very specific to the Parks and Recreation Board because we called out that in the Legacy Plan when we approved it a year ago and, and set some very specific goals and targets within the Parks and Recreation Plan for diversity and equity and, and most opportunities in health. So I think that I'm not disturbed that that's the only plan that called it out as a major piece of their work. And I think its absence elsewhere doesn't indicate that those committees aren't sensitive to it.
Anything further? Then we'll move on to the review of Surface Water Management Utility Revenue Bonds. Ms. Kraus?
Okay, so in the 2021, 2022 adopted biennial budget, there is funding proposed and adopted by the city council and in support of surface water capital projects that are accounted for in the Transportation Capital Project Fund. Specifically, we have for the JBLM North Access Improvement, there is $4.5 million that is to be funded by the storm drainage fees. And of that 4.5 million, 4 million was proposed to be funded by swim revenue bonds. So the bonds, the proposed bond ordinance includes a lot of boilerplate language, but really the key elements of the proposed bonds are that the maximum amount of the bond issuance is $4.1 million, and that includes that issuance cost. And the bonds may be issued in one or more series and the aggregate principal amount of the bonds cannot exceed $4.1 million. And because these are serial bonds, each of those bond series may not exceed 5.25% in the interest rates and the true interest cost of each series may not exceed 4.5%. The bonds would be scheduled to be issued at the, by the end of this biennium, so December 31, 2022, and currently proposed in the bond ordinance for 20 years. So the bonds could be sold by competitive sale, the negotiated sale or private placement, but that's really based on market conditions. So that will drive how we go out and sell the bonds. It also delegates authority to me or the city manager in my absence to determine the manner of the sale and complete all the tasks to issue the bonds. So the anticipated schedule for the bond issuance, we have on January 19 to adopt the bond ordinance and begin work on the official statements in March or April and April timeframe. We go for a bond rating in April or May timeframe and then close the bonds in June or July timeframe. That's assuming that we get the bonds issued in 2021. So I, city manager has asked me to also share the JBLM North project sheet. So I'm going to share my screen. And can you all see my screen? So this is the JBLM North Access Project that's in the budget. There is some slight modifications for clarity from what was in the proposed. So this project is broken out in three phases. And the first phase was the design that was completed in 2020. And the cost for that was $2,345,000. What's in the adopted budget is Phase 1 and Phase 2. So Phase 1 refers to the Phase 1 construction, which is $7,600,000. And Phase 2 is considered Phase 2 construction. And that is $9,025,000. And so in order to complete Phase 1 and Phase 2 in the 21, 22 adopted budget, the funds that we are getting or anticipate to get total $7,273,998. We received the $3 million in TIB grants. And the other $4,274,000, we would be applying for the Defense Community Infrastructure Program Grants. And that period hasn't opened up yet, but it's anticipated to open up in the spring of 2021. And city manager also noted in his email that there are other grant opportunities. And I'm probably going to pronounce this acronym wrong, the DC DACC A grant, so that's another opportunity. So as you can see in the funding sources, we talked about the grants anticipated. We also have mitigations and contributions already received. The GEO bond proceeds, that's from the General Fund, would be four point, I'm sorry, not from the General Fund. This would be the third part of our bond issue that the city council approved in 2019, 2020. So $4.7 million of those GEO bond proceeds, which are paid from real estate excise tax, is budgeted for this project. Then the Surface Water Management Fund would contribute $4.5 million, of which 4 million would be from bond proceeds and the other 500,000 is with the pay as you go, the balances that are in the current swim fund. And so this sources and uses schedule just shows that we've got $16,625,000 in sources coming in. And the project cost is $16,625,000. So that's what I have for the project sheet. And really, that's what I have for the presentation as well.
Okay, questions for Ms. Kraus?
Hey, Don.
Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd, remind me, how much, what is the revenue in the Surface Water Management Fund, like in 2021? What's our anticipated revenue? I mean, what are we working with here?
About $4.4 million. So in the proposed budget, it's $4,402,000 for 2021. In 2022, it's $4,516,000.
Okay. And, and of that, your bond, the bond proceeds, you're going to do a 20-year bond. So it'll be with interest and we'll pay, I imagine it'll be serial. So we'll pay a little bit of principal every year. You're looking at two, something a year?
The way that we have it just budgeted, and this is still to be determined if we do one bond issue or if we break it out into two different bond issues. And really for this amount, it makes more sense to issue the bonds at one time because you're going through a bond rating, which is, you know, about 15,000 and the amount of time, my time that goes into drafting the figures for that. So the estimated annual debt service is in the budget and it's currently at 15-year life was the estimate, but we'll see how the bonds, you know, what the market looks like. But the bond ordinance states that it's a no later than, no more than 20 years. So we could go with a 15-year life. And the 15 years in, that would be about $501,000 annually.
Okay. So, so 4.1 million there and the other bond issue we've already sold, right? Or the GEO one?
We did two of them and we will be issuing the other $6.6 million from the transportation projects. That would complete the three bond issues totaling 17.6 million.
Okay, so, so there, is there cash in the bank though? Is that what you're using or is the next bond issues, the GEO?
Are you talking about the three bond issues that we had from the 2014?
What's the, what's the third bond? What are, what are the other bond issues supposed to go for? It was veterans, right? And Onyx, that was the first one, veterans and Onyx.
So the last one that we had is, the big chunk of this is going to the JBLM North Project. The other portion of it, I could, let me, if you, just give me a moment, I can pull it up really quick and tell you that the other project is going to go to streets for the Silicon Boulevard, 88th Street and Waller de Custer. Those are two of our projects.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Kraus? Mr. Brandstetter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, just in looking at the draft ordinance, there is a section, and I'm actually looking on page 38 of the packet, which is page 16 of the ordinance, that talks about that if we do issue bonds that relate to the surface water utility, there's a provision in there that we're committing to no free service to anyone other than the city. When we were doing our rate adjustments for this utility, we had, for many years, had had a a group of properties that were given exemptions. And when we were doing the rate thing, that the intent was to phase out those exemptions by 2023. Have we phased them out to the point that they're no longer free? There were churches and nonprofit organizations, some community centers, some county property. You know, are we, are we good with that respect, assuming that this is a requirement once we start to issue bonds against the utility?
My understanding is that we're okay with the exemptions. In terms of the timing of the phase out of the exemptions, I, I do not have an answer for that. I'll have to look into it.
Okay, that's fine. If you could check into it, I think they were supposed to be done progressively over, over, over the years to 2023 rather than just be wait until 2023 to undo them. But I don't know how that is progressing. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Kraus. And we'll move on to a review of the Camp Murray Annexation Analysis with Ms. Kelly Fong.
Well, good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Hopefully I will stay on longer than my last presentation. I apologize for dropping off. The purpose of my presentation here tonight is to provide an overview of the Camp Murray Annexation Analysis Reports, which was included as attachment A to the Camp Murray Annexation Analysis Memorandum that starts on page 51. And I will share my screen with you and we'll jump on into this. Can you all see my screen? Fantastic. I'll just give some background. You can see the City of Lakewood here is in the yellow and Camp Murray just to the south is in the orange and the green is going face the westward, just to give some perspective. So a little bit about Camp Murray. So it is property of the Washington Military Department, which ultimately means that it is property of the state of Washington. As you'll notice throughout the reports, I refer to everything as Camp Murray just to keep it very clear. Camp Murray, being property of the state, is exempt from property tax. It currently has a very high level of urban services and a variety of utility providers. In total, Camp Murray is about 228 acres over nine parcels with one- with one parcel having most of the developments. Um, there's about a hundred and thirty acres of developments on Camp Murray. Um, there are a total of eighty eight buildings with some of them dating all the way back to nineteen sixteen. And as you can see here on the slide, there are a variety of different purposes that Camp Murray is used for, um, including administrative work, storage, vehicle support, et cetera. So you can see here on uh the map here to the right is a small picture of the Camp Murray installation map. Uh, so some high level backgrounds, uh, the Growth Management Act passed in the nineties. Uh, part of it was to reduce sprawl by encouraging developments in urban areas, um, particularly with existing uh public facilities or where they could be efficiently provided. Uh, as part of the Growth Management Act, um, urban growth areas were established by counties. And here in Pierce County on the, uh, based on the countywide Pierce, uh, countywide planning policies of Pierce County, they also established something known as potential annexation areas. Um, and these were unincorporated areas that were designated urban growth, um, which a city or town has identified as being appropriate for annexation at some. Um, the importance of this is that Camp Murray is listed as a Lakewood of potential annexation area. And to show you some examples here, um, on the left hand side in the Lakewood Comprehensive Plan, you can see figure one identifies Camp Murray as a potential annexation area. Uh, this is very similar to the Pierce County Comprehensive Plan, although it's, it's really hard to see. Camp Murray is obviously in this area and that is a potential annexation area for fourteen, which is the city of Lakewood. So to give some background and some history on uh Camp Murray and annexations, there have been previous reports on annexing Camp Murray. Uh, the latest one was back in two thousand and twelve, the city created an annexation report. At the time, uh, Camp Murray representatives, you know, said that they wouldn't be supportive of annexation unless annexation was revenue neutral. The report came out and showed that it was not going to be revenue uh neutral. Uh, the city continued to discuss this throughout time in two thousand and sixteen. Again, the city met with Camp Murray representatives, uh, Adagent, uh, General Brett Doherty, um, and his staff to talk about the annexation process. And once again, um, you know, Camp Murray representatives emphasized that it had to be revenue neutral for Camp Murray. Uh, in addition to it having to be revenue neutral, they also emphasized that in order for annexation to occur, it would also require state enabling legislation, which we'll get into just a little bit more uh in the presentation. So fast forward three years, uh, once again, the city met with uh Camp Murray representatives to discuss annexation and we worked with Camp Murray's executive level leadership team on this. And uh, together we produced the reports that is in front of you as attachment A uh in, in the June of twenty twenty. Uh, in addition to that, we met again here recently back in October twenty twenty to discuss the reports uh with Camp Murray representatives. And once again, Camp Murray representatives emphasized that annexation is not desired and they weren't going to be supportive of annexation unless it was revenue neutral. And as uh, you know, you can tell from the reports, um, without a serious mitigation, it would not be revenue neutral. We'll get into that in just a little bit more detail here in a second. Um, so some high level backgrounds on common benefits of annexations are outlined on page twenty through twenty one of the analysis and reports. Um, as you can see, there are just a few of them that are applicable to Camp Murray. Um, most of them are not applicable because um they apply to areas with residential uses and Camp Murray has no residential uses. Uh, so if you're looking at table B, you can see that uh the few that apply to Camp Murray have to deal with services, enhancing the city's tax base, creating more logical boundaries, um, higher utility rates and again, services. And I'll show you the second uh part of this table showing again what is applicable um with the green in the case of Camp Murray and then what would not be applicable as, as far as kind of common benefits of annexation with the red. So after the reports, uh, like I've already mentioned, one of the findings was Camp Murray already has a very high level of urban service providers and annexation would significantly increase Camp Murray's annual expenditures. Uh, table C here to the right is showing you uh the urban service providers currently. You can see all the utility providers, um, in addition to all the, the, the services that are provided by, by Pierce County. So it has a very, very high level of urban services. If uh Camp Murray were annexed to the city of Lakewood, uh, you can see what types of services the city would take over uh in this kind of reddish uh orange color. And that would be police protection, parks and recreation, uh, development services and service water management. Uh, moving on to how we would actually annex uh Camp Murray, starts on page twenty three of the reports. And like I previously mentioned, um, back in two thousand and twelve, when this was looked at, um, it was determined that annexation could only happen uh through the sixty percent method. That was the one uh method of annexation that was available at the time. And this would require uh state enabling legislation. Uh, there is a new method that has uh since been adopted by the state legislature in uh twenty twenty. And this uh new alternative method, which I've outlined here as number ten, uh, would also be applicable to uh Camp Murray and the annexation of Camp Murray. And it would not require uh the state enabling legislation. Um, it would relieve that, um, if there would be an agreement between the city and Pierce County to annex Camp Murray. Um, here in Pierce County, all annexations are subject to Boundary Review Board review. And if you want to learn more about that and report, it starts on uh page thirty. So moving on to the fiscal impact, which starts on page thirty five. Uh, once again, I just want to reiterate that Camp Murray, when they were uh looking about uh the annexation and how they could be supportive, they said that again, it had to have no fiscal impact on um Camp Murray. So we did the fiscal impacts and we looked um at a, the fiscal impact for two thousand and nineteen and then also fiscal impact for a period of ten years from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty eight. Um, some of our underlying assumptions were that there would continue to be no residential uses during this period of time. Camp Murray would continue to exclusively own and operates Camp Murray. Um, inflation would be three percent and that uh there would be limited staffing uh needs for the city if the city were to annex uh Camp Murray. And that sewer and water would continue to be provided by, based on this report to Camp Murray. Um, as I've already iterated in this presentation, um, the finding was that the annexation of Camp Murray in two thousand and nineteen as well as for that ten year period from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty eight uh would have a significant fiscal impact on Camp Murray without uh any sort of mitigation. Um, for the city, annexation without mitigation would increase revenues for the city's general fund and stormwater uh enterprise fund. So just to give you a overview of the two thousand and nineteen estimates, which you're looking on here on the left hand side is the estimated net fiscal impact of annexation. Uh, if uh it was to include the city taking over the boat launch. And then on the right hand side, um, the net fiscal impact of annexation, if the city were not to take over maintenance of the boat launch. So starting with the uh left hand side, you can see that big increases for Camp Murray as far as expenditures would come in primarily utility taxes in addition to sales tax. So in two thousand and nineteen, um, it's projected that had Camp Murray been annexed to the city, um, they would have expended around two hundred and eighty thousand more that year um than had they not been annexed to the city. And for the city, there would be a um revenue gain of around two, uh, four hundred and forty thousand. So looking at the, the ten year impact, um, you can see again, um, utility tax and sales tax being uh the, the big cost for Camp Murray. Um, over this ten year period, it's estimated that Camp Murray would expend about three point two million dollars more had they been annexed to the city, um, rather than remaining unannexed. So the city did look at a couple of mitigation options and they are outlined on.
Shannon, could you go back to the last slide for a minute?
Absolutely.
So what's? How, what was the sales tax calculated on?
So the sales tax was calculated, I believe they had, um, it was around eleven million dollars of expenditures that would be subject to sales tax and were subject to sales tax. They, they pay sales tax, um, based on wherever they received those items in two thousand and eighteen.
So why would that be a loss to them?
Uh, it, it's, it's not a loss, they would expend more on sales tax because our sales tax, and this is an estimate again, is higher than Pierce County's sales tax.
So it's just the differential?
Correct, correct.
But.
It's not showing you uh what they had expended during that period of time for Pierce County. It's showing the additional monies that they would have expended based on, on the higher sales tax rate of the city of Lakewood.
So it's only, only the, the spread between the Pierce County rate and the Lakewood rate, so correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so like I just mentioned, the city did look at a number of mitigation options and you can uh get a detailed overview of them, starting on page sixty nine through page seventy one. And what the city found is that with the mitigation options, and I've listed them over here on the right hand side in table A to Z, is that they presented significant risks. Um, in particular, uh, with the uniformity clause of the Washington State Constitution. So like I mentioned, as I started off the presentation, the city did meet with Camp Murray representatives in October of twenty twenty to discuss the findings of the reports. Um, and Camp Murray, you know, expressly said again that they were not supportive of any type of annexation by the city at this time. Again, because the city, um, by doing so would make expenditures for Camp Murray higher and not be uh revenue neutral. Uh, Camp Murray officials though did agree to continue to have conversations about the boat launch. Uh, Camp Murray is currently in the process of making some improvements to the boat launch and they're also requesting additional funds um during this legislative period for uh further improvements here in the future. Uh, so the recommendation at this time is uh option seven, which is continue to monitor the situation. So continue to, to take a look at annexation um in the future. And while doing so, um, continuing that dialogue with Camp Murray about uh boat launch properties and boat launch, boat launch property improvements. Uh, that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions from the council?
Questions from the council? Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, thank you, Shannon, for the report, very thorough, we appreciate it. Um, a couple of questions. Other than money, uh, what does the city have to offer of value to Camp Murray?
So that's a great question, uh, Deputy Mayor, and it's really limited again because Camp Murray has a very high level of urban services. Um, but you know, one of the options that we looked at was potentially taking over some services that are currently provided, you know, through, through the state at Camp Murray. But uh, the, the short answer is, is very limited.
In a situation like this, and you know, one wonders if this is never gonna happen, which in the foreseeable future, it's never gonna happen. Why does this remain in the city's U G A?
That is an excellent question, Deputy Mayor.
There may be some value in dumping that and doing something else down the road, but I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've personally been involved in conversations with the tag, the tag's predecessor, more than one occasion. Uh, the, um, I think Shannon has accurately described the situation. Outside the fence is different from inside the fence, and I think it merits uh continued consideration and eh with respect to the future of the boat launch. Uh, they have expressed a, a lack of interest in being the operators. Uh, I'm glad to see they're applying for some grant money to improve it because it was essentially defunded and abandoned by Fish and Wildlife. It does present a jurisdictional donut hole. And for that reason, it may be worthy of consideration, annexation of the boat launch if we are, we're having some sort of, of agreement with respect to law enforcement if we're the ones that are, end up operating the boat launch.
Couldn't we do that with an I L A, though?
Yes, that's why I said some sort of agreement. I don't think asked that be annexation.
Right. What, what is the, maybe the city manager knows this, what would be the, the downside, if anything, uh, to changing our U G A all these courses times and get rid of Camp Murray's boundary as part of our U G A? Is there any downside?
So Deputy Mayor Whalen, um, I don't, I don't think there's a downside, um, other than we'd probably be in violation of the Growth Management Act. You know, these urban areas that are, you know, um, adjacent to uh cities and towns, um, you know, are required to, you know, be part of a, a P A A, a potential annexation area. Um, you know, so, um, you know, the other is, you know, a lot of work and effort was done in creating these potential annexation areas. You know, and for Lakewood, um, it's Camp Murray as well as the Contaminant area of J B L M. So go, you know, going back on that, um, I, I don't think is, I, I don't, I don't believe would be prudent. You know, because as we sit here today, uh, you know, we recognize maybe there might not be an opportunity. Um, but that could change in five years or ten years or certainly twenty years down the road. And um, so I would trust in the process there and um leave those areas as part of our U G A. Plus, the city of Lakewood, um, you know, back in the nineteen nineties, you know, um, exercised a lot of political capital to have those areas um identified to be part of Lakewood's um P A A. So um, I would just, um, I would just throw that out there as well, Deputy Mayor.
So let, let me, let me ask the flip side of the coin then. So if it's important to include it within the U G A and the twenty twenty legislation authorized a process that doesn't require a vote, regardless of the money and the fact that they may not be supportive, which, what keeps us from annexing it anyway?
Because General Doherty would go down to the state legislature and the governor and say, please, and he would not support that and he would be able to stop it.
But it sounds like from the legislative review that Pierce County has the authority to consent, not the state.
Um, that's correct, um, but again, General Doherty, as a member of the governor's cabinet, would probably exercise a, a, a lot of weight there, Deputy Mayor. And then once it becomes.
But they don't have, they don't have a voting, this, neither the state nor.
Certainly.
Murray has the vote to preclude that if the county agreed with us.
That's, that's certainly true and uh you could do that. Um, but at the same time, you know, you have, we have to have relationships with uh Camp Murray and that would certainly not be one that we would get off on the right foot with.
Well, I understand the politics, I'm just talking about the process.
Yeah, but from a process standpoint, absolutely.
Yeah.
The Boundary Review, Review Board would weigh in. So they get three bites at the apple.
Yeah.
It'd be, well, four, our council, the county council, Boundary Review Board and legislature. So, Ms. Walker.
Yes, and I think the mayor may remember this. This is giving us flashbacks to previous efforts when um the general did exactly what the manager has outlined. And while legally correct, um, Deputy Mayor, what we've learned is that um other elements seem to seep into the process regardless of our best effort to follow the rules. And I think you've been around long enough to see how that happens sometimes. And when we were in that predicament, we had at least one legislator remind us that when we are down in Olympia and it starts to appear that our ducks aren't in a row, that in turn bleeds into some of our other requests. And I, I remember that because I think you were actually with me when the legislator told us that. So um, yeah, with, there's, there's always more at stake than just the, the simple question.
Oh, completely understood it. I just, uh, you know, we've known the answer to this question for some time. And so while I value the uh amazing and thorough analysis of uh Ms. Kelly Fong, which we will apparently be missing uh for the long term, uh, it, it is a project that we would likely shelf, you know, for much more significant consideration because it's just something that will never happen. At least in the short term.
Just, Mr. Brandstetter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I do have some agreement with the deputy mayor that uh, you know, continuing to monitor and look for something that is never going to be there with respect to annexation of this area is uh, is, 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 is probably not something that we want to. is, is, is probably not something that we want to even say that we're, that we're doing. We should, we should set it aside. Yeah, actually Buckley would probably, if we wanted to reduce our UGA, Buckley would probably be glad to, to take some acreage. However, the boat launch, outside of the framework of annexation, the mayor is right that the Fish and Wildlife has let the boat launch decline. Certainly they're not, they're maintaining it as if it was a, located in a, in a rural environment to do that. And the council, the legacy plan that we included did include an element that related to identifying the, the importance of that boat launch as, 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 as an associated thing to the recreation plans for us, and even stipulated some improvements that were needed, you know, parking and the repairs to the restrooms and some sort of overhead shelter and get away from a gravel access road and parking lot to be able to go and do that. So to the extent that we should sort of narrow our focus to trying to bring the boat launch up to a standard that we want it to have to be available to our citizens is probably, should probably look to be our, be our focus. I don't know whether you do that by re-leasing it and running it, or whether we get into a tri-party ILA that, and can get Fish and Wildlife, DNR to the, to the table for them to look to be able to go and do that. Plus, that facility does have a good number of volunteer groups that are interested in it, care about it, and, and do do some work to take care of it. You know, not, not dissimilar to how we have volunteer groups that help us with our dog parks and some other things. So I think we should just narrow our focus to the, to, to, to how we bring the boat launch into being a quality recreational asset to, not just the citizens of Lakewood, but the citizens of the region. And, and move along in that direction.
Mr. Coffield?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'll just add under, you know, the umbrella of never say never, you know, the fact is, is that the annexation of military installations into cities or a town is the exception and not the norm throughout the United States. And what has motivated military installations to be annexed into their neighboring cities is because they need something.
Right.
And right now, Camp Murray and JBLM, they don't need anything from us. However, that, you know, and I know, you know, our time horizon, you know, as we look out five or ten years is, you know, seems like an eternity, but in the world of public policy and in the world of planning, ten, even twenty years, twenty-five years is not a long time. You know, the folks in Fayetteville would never have thought that Fort Bragg and Pope Air Force Base would ever want to be part of their city. However, it comes to find out that they, they, the military, Fort Bragg desperately needed water and sewer services, and their most effective option was through the city of Fayetteville. Hence, Fort Bragg is now part of the city of Fayetteville. So again, I'll just, you know, say under never say never, you know, it, 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 it could happen. And, you know, the fact is, is that this analysis is probably one of the most comprehensive analyses that I've ever seen on something like this. And the benefit of having this is not just having it, but the fact that it was developed jointly with Camp Murray. So there's good, you know, really excellent buy-in and an understanding of the underlying assumptions and such. So I would just say again, you know, never say never because, you know, we could look, you know, we could be looking back thirty years from now and saying, yeah, you know, because, you know, we maintained, you know, what we maintained, it allowed the annexation of either Camp Murray or JBLM to happen.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to pursue this boat launch idea. And I'm with Mr. Branstadter on that. It, it, it really probably only ever was the only option, you know, and the one thing that we, we really wanted out of the deal. Is there any interest as we sit here tonight for DNR? Or I, I, I guess I, first of all, I'm not sure who's in charge. Who is Camp Murray in charge, or is the DNR in charge? And if they are, is there any, is there any interest at all in us, in working with us on that ramp? Or are they just saying it that maybe in the future someday they might? Because I, I feel like the annexation discussion was that way.
The, I thought, when I talked to the TAG, I thought he was sincere about the interest in pursuing, in his view, offloading the responsibility for the boat launch. And with respect to its legal status, it is state property. It belongs to the state military department. It was leased to DNR and that lease expired.
Oh, it's expired now, okay.
So it could be a similar lease, like we do with Fort Stoken Park for a number of years?
Yeah, and one of the, one of the issues there, as I understand it, is in order for, you have to be careful because some of the park's grants and grants related to property by water, et cetera, require you to have some sort of ownership interest or long-term interest in order to be the recipient of the grant. And so I think that's just a caveat that we, we'd want some arrangement that was such that we weren't disqualified from any of the state funding sources.
So are we okay with DNR operating it? Let's say they want to sign another lease, or do we want to operate it?
They, my understanding was they didn't have, didn't receive funding, and their budget has, for, for Mr. Whalen to be more, uh, up to speed on his brother work for Fisheries Forever, they kept getting cut back so much. They were looking for obligations to offload, and, and this was one of them.
Yeah.
You know, if you go on Google and look at it, people are really, really bullish on the use of the, the boat launch, so they like it. Residents really enjoy the opportunity to go down there. So if, you know, it could be a possible win-win, that would be in Mr. Coffield's vein of creating a win-win if we could do something with an inter-local agreement or a long-term lease. If people like it.
The, I don't think the military department, Camp Murray, had any interest in offloading the ownership permanently. Perhaps the view would be different if they had permanent rights to it, but they want to retain the ability to move their fence if they absolutely had to and make sure that the people associated with the guard have the opportunity to use it, those type of things. So I think they'd be very reluctant just to sign a deed. But I think it's a very realistic possibility for them to hand it over on a long-term basis and say, you, you apply for the grants, you take care of it. They're busy with other things. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate a very thorough report. So we're off to, back to you, Mr. Coffield. Reports by the city manager?
Actually, Mayor, I think Ms. Kelly Fong would like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Coffield. I just want to say a real quick thank you. It has been an absolute honor and privilege to work here and work with all of you for the city of Lakewood and the city of Lakewood's residents and businesses. And like the deputy mayor mentioned, I, my time with the city of Lakewood is coming to a close, but it has been an absolute delight. So thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Well, a lot of times I speak for the council, and I'll, I'll give other people an opportunity if they want to. I'd like to speak for Don Anderson personally. Shannon, you're a woman of exceptional ability, energy, and work ethic, and I'm very happy for you. Disappointed, perhaps on behalf of the city of Lakewood, but not sad because I'm happy for you. The public sector is very, very fortunate to have you, someone with your skills and abilities. And if you can't be in Lakewood, we're fortunate to have you staying in the area because I think you'll do the people of whoever you were serving during your career, a great service. And I wish you nothing but good luck. So thanks for letting us borrow your talents for the too short a time you were here. But I'll, I'll be watching you, and I'm sure that I'm going to see you rise through the ranks and do great things.
Yeah, I understand.
Just a ditto, great admiration and appreciation for all you've done for us. There's one thing that we can tip our hat to Mr. Coffield, is he tends to export excellence. And so thank you for gracing us with yours for the time we've had with you. So keep in touch. We look forward to seeing you again.
I just, I, I just want to say that the thoroughness and the, the quality and the, the amount of work that you produce. And tonight, I mean, you left on a, on another note of just a really thorough, complete, and easy to read, actually, report, which is just an incredible gift. I'll, I'll tell you, as a public employee, I'm just like, wow. The, the volume and the ability to synthesize it so that it's very reasonable is, is, is incredible gift and hard work, clearly, you know, right? I'm just amazed at the, at the volume of work you've been able to produce for us. And, and we're a better council and a better city as a result. I really do believe that. So thank you very much.
Shannon, I will just say, I have been impressed with you from the day I met you, with the knowledge that you have and the ability that you have to display and explain it carefully. I'm going to miss you. I can't tip up there and scare you anymore, but I wish you well. Good luck to you.
Yes, you know, I would, I would echo that your work has made us a better and more productive council. You know, I, I, I can see and have even told to me how our council seems to be better and more thoroughly informed on many issues that councils in nearby jurisdictions don't even touch to the depth of the information that you've provided to us to, to, to make us, to, to make us knowledgeable. And certainly wish you success and, and, and certainly I'm glad that you're going to be in a jurisdiction where we're going to still be working cooperatively with to be able to go that through the Southside Militaries Community Partnership and, 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 and other regional issues that the, you know, the Pierce Thurston County line is not the Mason Dixon line. It's just a thing that they had to go and do that.
Well, I will, I will echo everything that's been said already. I've only been here a year and experienced your thoroughness and your amazing writing ability. I would love to call out your versatility. You have, no matter who you step in for or what, or what project lands on your plate, whether you want it or not, you, you tackle it with, with absolute grace and, and, and the thoroughness that has been talked about already. And I'm going to miss you too. Great, great luck to you.
Well, thank you all again.
And just, to show how thorough you are and how impressive, I have repeatedly noticed that your treadmill never has anything hanging from it or sitting on it. So you truly are an exception.
Yeah, that's right.
Good luck, Shannon. Now we go to Mr. Coffield.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Well, first up, I'd like to review the draft agenda for the joint city council Clover Park School District meeting that is scheduled for your next study session, which is on Monday, January twenty-fifth. As this body is aware, once a year, you folks get together to talk with them. You know, last couple of years, the agenda, which is driven by this body as well as the Clover Park School District, have been focused primarily on project updates, either from the school district or from, from the city as well as, you know, a couple of joint initiatives. For example, the development of the Cooperative Joint Use Agreement, which we're hoping will come forward for city council consideration and approval here in the near future. Likewise, on the school district side. However, one of the things I heard from all of you is that, you know, you wanted this meeting to be really, you know, a dialogue between your colleagues on, on the school board. And so after meeting with you, there was really three topics that rose, rose to the top, and they're included in your packet there. One is the larger discussion of equity. Another is mental health support as it relates to the students and how they're doing as it relates to, of course, the current pandemic. And then, you know, what are the next steps? You know, where does the community go once the pandemic, you know, can, you know, moves to the rearview mirror, if, if, if you will? I've had ongoing discussions with this, this school superintendent. It's my understanding he has run this by their legislative body, and this has the support on their end. But certainly, this is an opportunity for all of you to either say, yes, this is what you want in the agenda, or if there are other items that you would like on the agenda. And if so, I can get that over to the superintendent, and we'll go from there, finalize an agenda, and be ready to go on the twenty-fifth. Also like to point out that the hosting of these meetings goes back and forth. Last year, it was the school district that hosted. This year, it will be the city of Lakewood that, that hosts the meeting. So, which really, in a virtual environment, all that means is that the mayor calls the meeting to order first and does roll call first. That's, and then adjourns the meeting first. So that's really the only, the only benefit of, of hosting the meeting. We, Deputy Mayor, we will not be providing snacks or anything along those, those snacks. Virtual meetings are a snack-free environment, Deputy Mayor.
Snacks can be delivered. Yeah. All the different locations at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Throw a bag of popcorn at them.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're all coming into store to the Dunk Clear. So let's get back and focus on your agenda, could we please? So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and the council. And again, this is your meeting, but if there are other items that you would like on the agenda, please let me know.
I don't see any hands raised. There's one. Mr. Whalen?
I wonder if it might be kind of nice, since we have this whole Zoom thing, to have a few, like a brief pictorial display of joint successful infrastructure projects. You know, the big thing we worked on for years was the Woodbrook Middle School. And it might be interesting for some of the board members to see the result of that collaborative work that we did together, which is now these beautiful, almost to be constructed distribution and warehousing facilities that have attracted employment through potentially Amazon and maybe another provider that might actually serve graduates of Clover Park School District someday. So again, a wonderful collaborative work effort that resulted in something very positive. Some of the roads and streetscapes that have been done in the last year or two, serving the community might be helpful too. And, you know, and, and they likewise have been able to open up man, or the Body Thomas Middle School as a result of that sale. So it might be fun to do a little pictorial, you know, year in review. That's just me. No more than three minutes or something like that.
Anyone else? I think I'd second that. I think it's interesting to see is I was surprised, Mr. Bulkey was surprised. It's, and when you translate that to jobs, people not commuting, people being, you know, employed members of the community and contributing, like the opportunity for youth. I mean, it's all part of the big picture. Anyone else? Oh, back to Mr. Caulfield. Have anything further?
I, I do, Mayor. So, just to be clear, so maybe just a pictorial recap of, you know, if you want to keep it limited to three to four minutes, really focusing on the joint collaboration between the city as it relates to the former Woodbrook middle school coupled with the new Dr. Claudia Thomas facility that has come out of the ground recently and just so maybe some before and after pictures. Is that, is that kind of what you're all thinking?
And if we've had any street projects by schools in the last couple of years, this is a reminder.
So, we, we can go into that. And then who would you like to give, you know, that presentation? And the reason I ask is because what I've heard from both bodies is really not interested in hearing from staff. No offense to me or my staff or Ron and his staff, but really this needs to be a or maybe we kick off the meeting with that.
That's what I would do. Yeah, I, you know, if, if scripted, I could give it, it'd be the winding rod for it. I want to be, I do want to be careful so it's not an I told you so.
Okay. All right. I'll talk to Ms. Kelly Fong about this.
Get her on it before she leaves.
Quick.
Okay. Just a, a few more updates if I, if I could, Mayor and council. The first is a friendly reminder, this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM, we're gonna go live with City of Lakewood's 18th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration, which of course is going to be virtual this year. So, really how it's going to work is we're going to post it, not, not just on our social media sites, but also our community partners and organizations, social media sites as well as our, as well as our website. And I think you're probably all aware, it's a 30-minute video featuring a number of members of our, of our, of our community along with a really nice keynote. So, just want to give you a heads up that that will be happening on Thursday at 6:00, 6:00 PM. Also, got some good news here. So, on earlier this week, I think it was Wednesday morning, most of Wednesday morning, I was actually in a meeting with my colleagues from the cities of Shoreline and Mount Lake Terrace, as well as the Legislative Director and some of her staff from Congressman Rick Larson's office. And for a number of years now, Mr. Larson has been pursuing a, a change in federal law to spin off a portion of what used to be called tiger monies, now called build monies for medium-sized cities. Cities of 10 to 75,000 population. This has been going on for well over 10 years now. Last year he got pretty close, but not quite there. Really the, even though it's got strong bipartisan support in both the House and the Senate, you know, they, they kind of view it as taking away from these mega projects that are needed throughout, throughout the country. So, what Mr. Larson is proposing is to actually create a brand-new connection grant program for medium-sized cities because we're really the ones that don't have direct access to federal monies. And I was very pleased to note that Mr. Larson's staff, she came prepared to the meeting with a really nice outline of what this program could look like. And so, long story short, we can expect Mr. Larson to introduce something as part of the upcoming Congress. And similar to DCIP, the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, this is going to be a bit of a two-step. The first step is this year or next year, it could take a couple of swings at the plate here to get the program authorized. And then, once the program is authorized, then we would seek the appropriations. One of the things that we did have a discussion about is, well, what should that dollar amount be? You know, should it be 200 million? Should it be a quarter of a billion? Should it be half a billion? Should it be a billion? So, that's going to take some, some vetting. And going through the authorization process will probably give us an indication of maybe where a good settlement of, of, of monies from an appropriate appropriation standpoint could come from. But from the city of Lakewood's perspective, we, you know, we provided a lot of good information on, you know, based on our experience with the DCIP, including having shovel-ready projects being at the top of the list. And because of that shows immediate success once a funding source is received. We also talked about a minute and a max, you know, maybe a minimum of 5 million and a maximum of 10 million. Also incorporating many of the same characteristics that the build program has, which is, you know, focusing on jobs and housing and having a good, strong benefit cost analysis in there. That is again, something that Lakewood, we pushed pretty strongly. And again, the reason there is because these monies could be used to implement the transportation improvements that are needed in support of your recently adopted town center subarea plan, as well as the connectivity within that plan to, for example, the Lakewood Sounder Station or a future BRT. And when we began talking about that, that really resonated with Mr. Larson's Legislative Director. So, really good news there. Also, we are one of, you know, I mentioned three cities at the table on Wednesday leading this. However, there are 16 cities citywide, I'm sorry statewide, that are really part of this. Again, between the populations of 10 and 75,000. But again, it's us three cities that are taking a proactive leadership role and trying to get this over the finish line. So, again, some good news there. Also, our, our federal delegation, and I'm going to send you a list, is really well-positioned on a number of committees and leadership roles to really get a lot of good stuff done for Washington State, including its newest member, our very own Representative Marilyn Strickland, who is actually going to be sitting on the House Transportation Committee where, for example, this particular bill will come forward to. So, some really good news there. And so, quite frankly, I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic in terms of the role that our federal delegation can play in assisting not just Lakewood, but all medium-sized cities here in Washington State or throughout the nation. Also, Lakewood Landing. So, as the council's aware, you know, we brought on board a broker, Lee &amp; Associates, late last year. And long story short, they are about to launch the offering of this project in the next week or so. It actually could occur this week. And they have a list of developers and interested parties totaling over 600, 6,700 people, 6,700 people throughout the United States to take an interest in this. So, again, this is the first phase of two or three. And we're very, very excited. And again, while the city's not the developer, the city has taken a very, very strong proactive role in getting this project to where it's been. And this is the furthest along it's ever been. And then, of course, on a parallel track, we're working with our state legislative, state legislators to get tax income and financing, which in some shape, form or manner, if it's approved, could also help incentivize and make this development opportunity and this investment opportunity even, even more attractive. So, more, 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 more to come, more to come on that. I know before the year closed out, I mentioned that, you know, DSHS is still working on Western State Hospital's master facility plan. We were hoping to receive it, you know, last week. The latest we got is we're, they're hoping to get it finalized here in the next couple of weeks. And hopefully by the end of January, we will have that and be able to move, move, move that, move that forward. Likewise, we continue to go back and forth and work with Pierce County on implementing the PALS Plus program. And by the way, that's probably going to require a review and consideration of an interlocal agreement that this body will need to consider probably in the next, next month or two. But again, so moving back and forth right now, what we're working on is finalizing a dashboard that would be on our webpage and we need to make sure that we're in compliance with how the system works on the Pierce County side. So, again, it's, 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 it's moving, it's moving, moving along. Also, Mr. Busic asked me to report that he, in the last week, received a report from Tech, Tetra Tech, which is the firm that's been working with us on Wahop Lake and actually want to tip my hat to Mr. Gregory Vigorin, who was on earlier this evening, since he was the project manager of that on the alum treatment. And basically, at this point in time, they don't see a need for a third treatment. And as far as any future treatment, the soonest that one would be needed would perhaps be two to five years. So, that is all very good news. As a matter of fact, I would like to read the conclusion that they had at the end of their report. It reads, "The 2020 alum treatments dramatically reduced phosphorus availability in the water column and prevented the occurrence of a toxic algae bloom in Wahop Lake. Water quality improvements resulting from the alum treatment are expected to continue." So, nothing but good news there. And so, the alum that has been put in that lake is doing what it needs to be, needs to be doing. Also, on the economic development side, our Economic Development Manager Becky Newton is spearheading her annual business survey. One of the things that she wants to do later this spring that we had to put off in 2020, come back to is have a developer forum, maybe in that May or June timeframe, even if it's a virtual event. So, more, more to come on that. Also, you may have seen in the newspaper and Sound Trains has been, Sound Trains, it has been very, very good about keeping us appraised and working with us on this. So, next weekend, I think as I mentioned before, the holidays, they are going to begin their railroad signal testing along the Point Defiance bypass rail, meaning they are going to be running test trains at 79 miles an hour, starting at the Tacoma Dome, all the way down to the curve down in, in Dupont. That is going to be occurring between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM this Saturday and Sunday. Also, they're, they're working with the Lakewood Police Department, as well as I presume the Tacoma Police Department, on having some folks out there from a security standpoint as this, as this testing, as this testing occurs. So, all that is COVID. So, I think you're all aware, the governor did announce a new, a new plan, New Healthy Washington, moving away from this, it's, it's, it's the Safe Start Program. And so, basically effective today, everybody is in phase one. Also, a key difference is the state as a whole is broken down into different components. So, for example, Pierce County, we are part of the Puget Sound Group, which includes King and Snohomish County. So, we're evaluated as one region and our metrics are tracked accordingly. And so, for, in order for us to go to phase two as a region, there's, and I'm not going to get into the detail here, but those metrics need to improve pretty significantly. Meanwhile, on the vaccination front, the Department of Health is doling out those vaccinations at the local level here in Lakewood and Pierce County. The local agency responsible for spearheading that is the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. We continue to have communication and dialogue with them on that and we have offered any and all resources that we can do to help. The latest decision as of mid-last week is that the Health Department, as they set up the logistics to move into the general public or larger numbers of people and administrating the vaccine, is that they want to do it via drive-through. So, not using facilities where people will come and stand, but really very similar to how they're doing the testing right now. And so, delivering the vaccination that way. We have offered up several locations, one being Fort Stilliken Park, just given the the largeness of the area, but also the way that the people can ingress and egress in and out of that facility. We've also suggested some of our larger parking, parking lots, for example, the area behind Barnes &amp; Noble or the large parking lot up by the other movie theater up at 84th. And there could be some other locations as well, for example, our community colleges if they have, if they have the space. So, just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that we are engaged with the county, I'm sorry, with the Health Department on that, as well as the county, actually, the, of course, the Pierce County DEM, who are also playing, playing a role in that. As you know, happy birthday. City of Lakewood is 25 years. We'll be 25 years old on February 28th. We're in the process of kicking off, you know, just a discussion on how we want to celebrate that. We'd like to culminate it with some kind of an event at Colonial Plaza, hopefully in the September timeframe. Once again, all of this pandemic is, is hopefully knock on wood behind us, but that's our plan right now. Right now, we kicked off an art contest, you know, seeking people to submit artwork with two themes, unity and love Lakewood. And the timeframe to submit that artwork is February 15th is the deadline. And then, the goal is to have some kind of a nice flip book that we would have available on February, February 28th. Some other things that we're looking at is of course, an article highlighting the 25th anniversary and our next Connections Magazine, looking at creating a dedicated website or webpage with the historical timeline and events and photos and, you know, things, things along those lines. So, more to come on that. But, but again, even in a pandemic, we're going to continue to move forward with these types of events and this type of recognition. The state legislature kicked off earlier today. It's the long session and so, at this point in time, they're expected to adjourn on April 25th. Long story short, it's going to be a virtual, a virtual session, which means for all of you, you know, there's going to be an opportunity to testify. So, you know, the, the reasoning of, well, you know, I just can't pull away to go down to Olympia for four hours. Well, that's not going to work, Mayor and Council. So, if you have an interest in, in testifying and, and it's okay, I've been doing it for years. It's easy. It's easy. We'll provide you talking points. You're all experts at this. But the fact of the matter is, and this is something I'm really serious about, the state elected officials want to hear from their local elected officials. It's all well and good that myself and others go down there. But really, they want to also hear from you. So, I will be reaching out to you when those opportunities do arise. But again, we're not just going to throw you out there. We'll be working with you to provide you key talking points that you can make your, make your own on that. And again, as far as we're situated, as far as our state legislative priorities, we're, we're, we're looking pretty good, pretty good as well. Likewise, on the South Sound Military Communities Partnership as well. So, with that, Mayor, that's my report. Thank you.
Questions for the city manager? Not seeing any. We'll move to council comments. Ms. Mullis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say that I had an opportunity to view the virtual MLK video this week and I think you're going to be really pleased with the results of it. It turned out very nice. In fact, the committee was pretty much in tears as we viewed it. So, look forward to seeing that and hearing your comments on it. So, thank you.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say that I was glad to hear today that the, the, the project that's been going on for over a year at, at, at McCord regarding Clover Creek, that they're now going to re-divert the creek back into the, the new tunnel as opposed to a culvert under the, under the runway. And that, that will actually either happen today or will happen tomorrow. And that will have some environmental positives once the the initial water goes out. And I was surprised to learn that the, the, the fish traveling through the tunnel will now have the benefit of the fact that there are lights inside that tunnel as it goes under the, the runway for the stream to, to go through. And I am looking forward to the Martin Luther King product and celebration that we're going to be able to provide to to the community. I think the times indicate that looking for positives and things that bring people together are important. Thank you.
That begs the question of whether very, since it's the Air Force, they're red and white Vassys glide slope lights. Mr. Oki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with the school district today. I was a representative at the meeting today. So I just covered, I I mentioned the train testing this weekend. And there seems to be pretty good signage out there and everything else, but you never know. I then I talked about the permanent COVID testing station at the old emissions facility. And when that was open and 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 talked about that. And then I actually talked about the testing that the city manager just talked about. And I said, well, you know, they want people to stay in their cars. So it has to be areas with big parking lots and it could be, you know, at Harry Lang or or at one of the high schools. And they seemed open to that, or at least it sounds like they've had some discussion about using some of their parking areas for vaccinations. And then I did talk about the 25th anniversary and the and the art details. And I had received a briefing on that earlier at the youth council meeting, and I'll get to that in a minute. And then the it talked about the Martin Luther King event on Thursday. And I think that'll be very interesting that it's a video and and might and kudos to to whoever put that together because it's not easy putting a half hour video together. That's a that's a lot of of time to 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 get good video for. So good, good for the folks that did that. We had youth council today. And they seem to be doing okay. I mean, when the question came up, how are you guys doing or how's school going? Myriad of responses. I mean, for for some of them, the the online things have actually worked to to some extent. You know, kind of works until it doesn't. I mean, because they they that's how they learn or whatnot. And and then for a couple of them, it was like, ah, not so much. Because when when things come up and and kind of working within that group environment. So when they get to the hybrid model, maybe that'll work out for everybody because because some of the folks do seem to be actually doing fairly well on on the the internet model. But they're high school kids and they tend to be higher performing high school kids. So I mean, maybe it's it'll be interesting to see who who had worked out best for. And it was mentioned tonight that the Lakewood Promise Board is going to meet with them in March and discuss mental health. And so I I spoke about the county has now passed the 1/10th, the 1%, but there's there's caveats to it. And so depending on what happens, it may not be implemented. But I thought I told them, I thought was now is a good time to be talking about it, discussing it. But this is this is how when you line things up. So when it does eventually get passed, or if it does come into effect in July, or certainly when you start budgeting for it in the in the 2022 23 biennium, which that that's what the county is on. It'll be a good time. So the spring is March is a great time to be speaking about that. And I hope that the the Promise Board, I'm sure the Promise Board will will learn a lot from the kids when they discuss things. And I hope that there's a work product at the end of the Promise Boards work on this that we can forward, that they can at least forward to us so that maybe we can forward to the county or something as part of budget discussions going forward and the things that the city is looking for. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
At the risk of of sounding, I can't quite think of what the right word melancholy isn't quite the right, right word, but it just passed the anniversary of my swearing in. And I just wanted to say I miss you guys. And I'm really hoping that maybe in the next six months, we can, we can be back in the chambers together. And I'm I'm really looking forward to to more more collaboration and perhaps some in person collaboration. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And snacks.
I was going to bring that up.
I I took a tray of cookies to the office today and they disappeared. Snacks are the kind of universal collaboration medium. I have nothing further to to offer as anybody else. If not, we'll see you virtually next week. We're adjourned.